Good evening.
Someone in awhile.
And welcome to the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. We have four items on the agenda. With your permission, I will switch some of the items because the last two items are fairly short and we can go ahead and get them out of the way and then we'll have time to spend on the rest. So, item number one is now going to be the discussion regarding final closeout change orders and final acceptance of the CDBGDR grant project.
[inaudible]
Thank you there, council members. I'm Tim Miles, Capital Projects Engineer, and I'm here to talk to you about four change orders that you're gonna see next Tuesday on June 11th regarding the CBVGDR projects out in Ward 5. The tongue twister. I think most of you are familiar with these projects, but I want to give you a quick overview. So, back in 2015, we received funds to help recover some of these roads that were damaged during the 2012 wildfires and the 2013 May tornado. And so, we received federal funds to pay for 100% of these improvements out there. So, the green roads were ones that the county did and the red roads are the ones that the city was responsible for. And we had nine projects, as you can see on numbers there, and we basically were allotted $17 million to do the improvements. And so, these change orders are gonna be the final change orders to adjust the quantities for all of these projects. The reason there's only four is because several of these projects were grouped together and so there's just one change order for multiple projects. So, we're essentially complete with all these projects with the exception of Projects 4 and 7. And I think most of you are aware that we lost some federal funding back last year. Basically, I don't have all the details of it, but it was kind of a clerical error or an error on HUD's part. In the past, they've been, these two projects were basically running out of time because of utility relocations. And in the past, HUD has been able to use what they call, they have these vouchers that they can basically shift the money around to enable to use all the funds. And so, we had requested, the city had requested a time extension and HUD basically said it wasn't necessary because we could use these vouchers and we wouldn't need to turn that in. And around that same timeframe, HUD was evaluating internally their processes and found out that switching the vouchers didn't meet the federal requirements. So, they came back to us and said, "Well, we're not gonna be able to give you that $2.5 million." So, basically, we had to postpone those two projects, the construction of them, because we didn't have city funds to pay for those projects. Now, the good thing is, is they did fund the design of these projects. They funded about $75,000 in right-of-way that we needed for these projects. And now the utilities have been relocated, so as soon as funds are available, those projects are basically shelf-ready and can go to construction at any time.
So, we are expecting to get the CDBG money?
We are, we're getting all but, all but $2.5 million. So, we were originally gonna get 17 and now it's just under, it's about $14.4 million. That's what we're getting.
So, but you said that those other projects are ready to go if we got...
4 and 7 is ready to go if we can find another funding source.
Oh, have to find another...
We have to find this funding source, yes.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Councilmember Castleberry.
You mentioned that, or the math there shows 8 and 9, or those were county, Cleveland County projects, right?
No, 8 and 9, the red.
I thought they were green.
Well, there's, there are green.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's some inside that are red, okay.
Yes.
So, that's the portion that we're paying for, so.
8 and 9.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the red part there. I just saw the green ones out there. I was wondering, why are we paying county?
Okay, okay.
But never mind. That's, I assume that's just for our part of those projects, 8 and 9.
Councilmember Wilson.
What are the basics on what's gonna be done on 4 and 7 or would be done if we add the funds?
I believe those are both reconstruction, so they would get, the road would get completely reconstructed with a six-inch asphalt surface and new ditches and...
So, wasn't that little stretch on 7, didn't we do something on that? Was that the one we...
We've just acquired right-of-way at this point on 7. Those projects were both under contract with Silver Star when we found out and then we had to cancel their contracts. So, you'll see on the next slide, we have a small cost related to that, but it's pretty So, the highlighted items are the final change orders that we'll be talking about or that you will be asked to approve next week. And so, Projects 1 and 2, the final cost reconciliation is a negative $147,000. The previous change orders, Change Orders 1 and 2, those were, those were basically upgrades that we added to the project because of, there was available funds. Change Order 1 for Projects 1 and 2 as well as 3 and 5, they're the $1.1 million. That basically was to add our desired pavement section. We originally bid it with a four-inch surface on the reconstruction, but we wanted the extra two inches so it would last for a lot longer, maybe more durable if we had another natural disaster. So, because the bids were good, council approved those monies back in, must've been 2015. And then Change Order 2, that was the bridge-sized box culvert that we needed to replace on 120th Avenue Southeast, south of Highway 9. It was way undersized and we found out that it was, the existing culverts were deteriorating and needed to be replaced, so council accepted that project. And these were all 100% funded, so. And then, so Projects 3, 5, and 6, the original change order was for the pavement, the added pavement section. So, the one we're talking about tonight, or for next Tuesday, is the $117,000 overrun quantity adjustments. Then, Projects 4 and 7, we're getting most of that money back that was originally awarded for that project except for the $22,000. And basically, the contractor had already started ordering materials and so he had a restocking fee that he had to pay to return the materials back to the supplier. So, that's what that charge is about. And then Projects 8 and 9, the $174,000 overrun there is, part of that project was a mill and overlay only with some pavement patching. And after they milled the section, there was a lot more pavement that needed to be replaced, so that was a pavement patching one. So, if we really look at the three numbers, so Project 1 and 2, Change Order 3, Projects 3, 5, and 6, Change Order 2, and then Projects 8 and 9, Change Order 2, that's kind of the final quantity adjustments for the entire, all of the projects. Basically, we have about $147,000 in overrun on these $10 million worth of projects, so it's less than 1.5% overrun on these projects. We still haven't done all the final closeout with ODOT because we have to finish this and then Lisa Craig, our grants administrator, will be working with ODOT. But it sounds like the way they're gonna allow us to shift the money around, we think that there's gonna be no additional cost to the city for these projects. And so, basically, we've gotten 16 million, or 16,000 projects for about $13.5 million. And with a lot of drainage improvements, it's gonna help flooding out in those areas. So, it's been a great, great program, and we're able to take advantage of federal funds.
Okay, any questions, Councilmember Castleberry?
Just to be clear, this is CDBG money, so this is all 100%, this is all federal money?
Yes.
And so, even the, like, the million dollars, that's not, we're not adding a million dollars to our capital fund.
Right.
This is all the CDBG.
Right.
We're just not getting that money in federal funds.
Right, we had to front all this money and so we're getting reimbursed as we turn in invoices and so we're planning to get full reimbursement for everything that we've invoiced.
That's not necessarily, is that gonna leave us with a million dollars in CDBG?
No, no. What we don't use, we don't get back.
It's just a million dollars spent, right?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make, make it clear, we didn't have that million dollars sitting around for projects.
No, we do not.
So, I hope you're gonna tell me I was wrong.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ken. Mr. Kaminsky.
My name's Ken Kaminsky, I'm Director of Utilities. And coming before you next week would be a change order to our water treatment plant. And so, that's a really big project, it's been a number of years. And with me tonight is our project manager, Chris Mattingly, and for Corolla Engineers, there's Tom Crowley and Amber Wooton, and then our water treatment plant manager, Jerry Wolbourn, who's over there. So, if you have any specific questions, they'd be happy to answer you. To start with, this is exactly the slide that we showed back in 2014 before we asked our voters to vote on order rate increase. So, this is one of the impetus's for the order rate increase was our water treatment plant. We needed $31 million and a big piece of it was regulatory-driven. We had to do that. So, we had regulatory driven, while we were doing that to make it for disinfection purposes, it also enhanced water quality, so we'll have better water quality when this is finished. Safety, so instead of having one-time gaseous chlorine cylinders, we'll be making our own chlorine, so it's a lot safer for the community and our employees. And then rehab and replacement, you know, this is a 1960's water treatment plant that we're rehabbing. But the key here is back in 2014, we were asking for $31 million for this treatment plant. So then, we borrowed $31 million back in 2017 and we started the project. So, we got Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan from the state, 2.82% for 20 years, so that was pretty favorable. And we had Change Order Number 1. Now, next week, you'll have Change Order Number 2, which is this one. So, we had the original contract, we had the first change order about a year ago, we have Change Order Number 2 now. So, the project still is coming in at just under 30 million, 30 million, 30 and a half, 30 million and a half, 30 million 500,000. So, these are the specifics that are included in your agenda item that you can look at for all the pieces of the change order, because it's $300,000. But we tried to clump them together. There's value-added. These are the stuff that, when you're working with a treatment plant, again, this treatment plant is in operation 24 hours a day, every day. And so, when they dig up something to connect to a clarifier and the crew and the staff, which I have to back up again, is Corolla has been very good as engineering firm and our project manager, Chris and Jerry, to keep our employees involved because they're working here every day. So, if they see something they need or want that adds to one of these things, mostly that's a design change and value-added. They should say, "Hey, now that you have this ditch open and we're connecting to a clarifier, we ought to really replace this pipe." That's the type of value-added thing that they've got. The other change in design would be, again, the employees might say, "Now we're adding this or we're switching from here." You know, maintenance would be easier if you added a valve here, that it would just make it nicer for us. So, those are the type of design changes. Change of conditions would be, like we're doing the UV building, you dig down 20, 30 feet and the soil wasn't quite sufficient to hold the foundation, so they had to do some soil amendments and de-watering, things of that nature. So, these are in big clumps, the reasons for the change order.
Quick question about that. Really? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Beerman.
I'm trying to make the numbers work under change conditions. How do you have an increase of 113 plus, but only a net, but a net change of 178,000?
That's a good question.
Like, there's a missing $65,000 in there somewhere?
I'll have to find that.
Okay, so is the correct number 113,000 or 178?
Probably 178.
Okay. Never the lower number.
That's a good one. And all of these, again, you can go through and we color-coded them here to see which ones are a benefit, but this is all in your packet that you get when you, before you have to vote on this. So, this is what the treatment plant looked like beforehand, and this is like right before construction started, because here's a little tent that we set up for our ribbon cutting And then, this is what it looks like just two months ago. It's still quite a work in progress, but these are all the pieces that we have. So, we have a brand-new ozone chemical building up here, we have a new maintenance building, there's liquid oxygen that will be over there. There's quite an extensive amount of work that will be going on in the existing chemical feed building. This is still in operation because the plant is still in operation. These are low-head pumps that will be pumping water into the ozone contactor, this is all brand-new. There's a brand-new UV building, that'll be disinfection. And then, we have new high-efficiency, high-service pumps that are installed and now are working. So, these are really kind of neat things, but the staff and Jerry deserve a lot of credit for not having injuries. Essentially, they've been working with this with zero injuries so far, and they had to work this 24 hours a day. So, again, this is in summary, this is the change order that will be on your agenda. It's 1.8% of construction so far. The original date, the start date and finish date, we're supposed to be finished right about now. But with weather delays and other changes, changes in conditions, it'll be finished probably at the end of the year, the end of this calendar year.
Ken, while I'm thinking about it, will you make that correction, the mistake on the slide and send it out to all the council members so we know what the numbers were supposed to be?
Sure.
I know it'll be corrected for the council meeting, but that'd just be helpful.
Absolutely. And then, with that...
Councilmember Castleberry.
What was the contingency on this project?
I'm not sure we had...
5%?
We did, we had 2%. Usually on construction jobs, rates between 2 and 5%.
So, even with the change orders, are we still with, is this, is the contingency, so we're still in under budget?
Well, we borrowed $31 million, we're at $30,500,000 so far.
With the changes, after the change?
With these two changes. With the change order comes the engineering piece of that also. This is a separate item on your agenda. These are called engineering amendments, it's not a change order, but it's an amendment to the engineering contract, and this would be for $320,000 for things that go on with the treatment plant. So, I wanted to put these, to marry these two together, so you didn't just look at the change order, I think that was it. Additional construction with changes that were going on is 119, 123,000 is just that the continued inspection for six more months. When you borrow money, you're on the stage, you have to have inspections, so you can't say, "Oh, we're almost done, let's just finish, let's just give them the inspection." So, when you borrow money, some of the caveats are, you have to do that. Then there's enhanced design. Early occupancy is to get some of the pieces so our crews can work, can use it while the treatment plant is in operation, rather than wait until the end of the project and say, "Okay, now everything can work." Like those high-service pumps, those low, the high-pressure, high-service pumps are in service now. So, they're a benefit to us because they're a lot more efficient. They're put in a little bit on the early side, but we had to do them because we couldn't live without high-service pumps for a period of time, and so now they're working, that type of stuff. And so, their contract is a total of almost $5.5 million. A big piece of this started back in 2012. We had to do a pilot study to see how we were gonna treat the water. We knew we had to do some disinfection pieces for regulatory, we wanted to do the enhanced water quality, and you can't do that in theory. I mean, you have to have the water in front of you. So, this is like a six, eight-month process of using different treatment techniques with our water from our lake during different seasons, so they knew what processes to use. But then this piece was really the, the main design of the treatment plant, once you have that information. So then, this is an amendment to this contract essentially. And that's also on the agenda. So, that's it.
Any questions? Councilmember Clark.
In December, when it is completed, will there be some kind of ribbon-cutting, public tour, so they can...
Yeah.
Good, slay, sir.
I love a party and...
Yeah, festival.
One of the things is, this is available, we have given tours to different groups of stuff while it's in process, while it's being worked on, so you can see some of the inside workings. Most of this stuff is now up out of the ground, so it's, it's better. But as you can see from just two months ago, it's still, it's kind of muddy, so you know, you're welcome to contact Jerry and we'll give you tours, let's know how we're doing and what's working and what's not working so far as we put this together.
Thank you, Ken. That brings us to item number three, which is the update on the Cleveland area Rapid Transit, CART, Public Transit Program.
Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works and quickly learning the transit business, so we're talking about transit, my partner in crime, Christina Bell, from our legal department. Hopefully, you all received a copy of our PowerPoint, this is postponed from last week, a memo that we wrote to giving an update with us. Transfer of the bus service. Want to acknowledge Chris Glenn from CART was here.
I'm over here. Moving around. Didn't you, weren't you over there?
I was, thank you. The bus moved.
See, he's symbolic of CART, it's kind of like a moving target, just kind of, it changes, you know, versatile. Appreciate you doing that.
Also, want to introduce Kevin Mulcahy over here on this side. Kevin is the Assistant Director of M-MARC, and so we'll talk a lot about M-MARC tonight. I appreciate working very much with Kevin, we met a few months ago and we've become fast friends, so appreciate him taking time to be here tonight. So, just want to give you an update, we're gonna go back a little bit for some of the basics that you have seen. Again, the bus service, transit service in Norman, public transportation has been operated by the University of Oklahoma for about 35 years. Someone kind of put it to me the other day that we're kind of undoing the way it became. So, 35 years ago, the University of Oklahoma decided to run some buses for its students and then the Federal Trans Administration was sort of born out of public transportation and they agreed to, the university agreed to expand it into a citywide transportation system. Now, we're kind of undoing that and the university is gonna keep the student transportation, student bus services, and the city is going to assume they're still running the same kind of a system, the two different agencies doing it. The program is funded by the Federal Trans Administration, a grant there, the University of Oklahoma, city, state, and Norman Regional Hospital. That will continue, I'll get into the numbers here in a minute. The city was notified and by the university in August of 2018 that the revenues were insufficient to cover the expenses. So, that kind of sounds familiar with our budget, the revenues were, were not keeping up with the expenses of the system. Council reviewed that and in October, you renewed the annual contract with CART in the amount of $635,500. Last year, or the previous fiscal year, it was $575. So, council increased the, your contribution by $60,000 in FY '19. And again, CART is managing those operations within the budget that has been approved for this year. So, the university has decided about, in that same timeframe, about September, notified the city that they're no longer interested in running the city-wide, community-wide bus service, but wanted to keep their current OU routes, there's four of those, we'll talk about those in a minute. And the goal has been and continues to be to transfer that service by the end of this fiscal year, July 1st, which is less than 30 days away. It's feeling very urgent to those of us working on this project. We can transfer all those federally-funded assets, I'll talk about that here in a minute, assuming that we become the FTA grant recipient and we're close to hitting that designation. And again, it'll be the city working with M-MARC, not, in this case, not another third-party provider. The transfer, of course, has to be done in coordination with FTA and the plan must be approved by FTA, so that's the stage that we're in right now, I'll talk about that here in a minute. And then, we've got to ensure and from council direction and FTA's direction that there be no gaps in service or not, the buses will never stop running during this transition. We talked last time about this five-step federal protocol here. I think I want to mention too, that when we started into this, we thought, "Well, just tell us what the last transfer of bus service was in this country, we'll just follow that." And the 30 and 35-year veterans at FTA said, "I've never done a transfer of a bus service, that just doesn't happen in this country." So, we're doing something very unique here in Norman and we've had to all kind of learn, like everything else we do in Norman, we've all had to learn and the FTA folks have been patient with us. But there is a federal protocol and this is the one we're following. So, the notice of intent was issued by the university in December. After the government shutdown, we lost about 30 days there, FTA responded to them in February. We made our final application to the governor's office in May, early May, and you'll see a copy, I think it's in your packet too. Governor Stitt has authorized the Norman as a grant recipient, a big, big step, and now we're waiting for FTA to confirm that step. The governor's letter was dated May 21st, so it was about two weeks ago. And then, the final step, we'll talk more as we go along here, is to actually transfer all those assets, transfer the service, and the city will now become the operator of the system. That step three was complicated. Christina can speak to this better than I can, but long story short, the governor, the governor's authority to designate grant recipients had been delegated to ODOT except for Norman, we were special, and, and the previous governor's designation had been to the University of Oklahoma. So, the letter changing the designation supersedes ODOT's internal administrative rules, they'll have to make some changes this fall, but that's, that's work in progress. Here's a letter from the governor two weeks ago, so it was a thrill to get that. That notion of becoming the grant recipient is key to this process. If we don't get that done, we don't have funding and the system fails. So, that's where we put a lot of our energy in recent weeks and months. This next step is formally authorizing the city, or the FTA authorizing the city, to become the grant administrator, and there is this legal, technical, and financial capacity that Christina's spending actually more time than I am proving to the FTA that we have all of these capacities. Legal is, is kind of obvious to most folks. Technical is, we're gonna get into this business of, do you have the buses, do you have buildings, do you have transfer stations, do you have bus stops, do you have operators, most graphics are things, so we're, we'll talk more about that, but that's the part that we're into. And of course, do we have the financial capacity to operate this system going forward? So, here is the financial, kind of the numbers, if you will. On the left, the, the numbers on the left column there represent the current numbers. So, today, or this year, the university is receiving about 1.7 in federal grant funds, a little short of 1.7 in student fees, the city's contribution of 635, we got a State of Oklahoma contribution, Fairbox revenues, the advertising revenues, and then a contribution from Norman Regional Hospital.
Councilmember Beerman.
150,000 from the State of Oklahoma, is that what they typically give transit? Is it just like a, you have a transit system, you get a check?
It's been consistent here, Council, I'll ask Chris if he can help me with that.
Absolutely, the formula fund is based on population and ridership and it has gone up in recent years, but it's been 150,000. So, that may be very different from what Tulsa gets, but that's what we specifically get. So, it's not like it's dibby-dub and each transit system gets 150, it is specific to Norman and CART.
Is the population, city population or ridership population, is that, like, so will that change once we...
I think it's weighted both. I'm not exactly sure of the formula, but it is population and ridership is what it is. And that funding will not stay with us, that will go to the city.
Do we have any sense of whether or not the funding will continue at that level, even with the change in ridership numbers?
Great question. We do. The state has indicated they've been a great partner, it's actually the DOT, Ernestine Embro is the Director of Transit at the Oklahoma DOT, and she has been very helpful to us and has said that this will continue with the same formula, yes.
Thank you.
Great question. So then, bring your attention to the right side of the screen, which is sort of the revised numbers to the best of our ability today. These could change slightly, but we had to get to this point to know if we could run this system in the next 30 to 60 days. Fortunately, maybe just pure luck, based upon the formula at the federal level, there's an appropriation process that goes on each year. This was released about 30 days ago and Norman has been granted now $2 million in FY '20. So, we've gained 300,000. Frankly, no one at the federal level can explain exactly how that happened to me. It is population-based and it's allocation-based, I'm sure at the federal level... to me. It is population-based and it's allocation-based, I'm sure at the federal level. But the good news is, we are, in our first year, we are getting more federal funds, which is really helpful.
Councilmember Clark has a question.
You might explain it. Keep going. I'm asking about where we're going to find that, what, $400,000, $500,000?
Right. So it may just go down the list here. So again, the university, in addition to, you know, keeping the student operations or the bus operations for students, they're also going to keep all the student fees. So there's a big goose egg here in what used to be the university's contribution to the program. But I have plugged into this the original 635.5 that's in this year's budget, and the additional $500,000 the council has sort of put in as a placeholder in this FY20 budget that brings us to 1.135 million in city contributions. So our contributions is going up quite a bit to keep this process moving. And then I've held current on everything else except for the Fairbox revenues, and the university is going to, of course, keep the day shuttle revenues, and that generates about $100,000. Third question.
No. And does this include, I guess it's almost the next slide, but I mean, are we bringing back Saturday service once we take over?
That is your call.
Will that number cover it?
The current plan is to operate the system exactly the way it is today, after July 1st or August 2nd, or whichever the date is we transfer. And then if council wanted to go back and add Saturday service, or do anything else you want, we would then negotiate that with M-MARK to end with the budget.
I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm very interested in bringing back Saturday service because people depend on it. And, you know, as we're reducing to Monday through Friday, Oklahoma City is adding Sunday. So we are going the wrong direction in a walkable, bikeable, any sort of public transportation community. So again, I can't speak for everybody, but I know I would like to see the numbers on there.
What was the, what's the cost of the city running Saturday service?
I have to get that for you, Mayor. We're just now negotiating the cost of operating this new system. And I practically don't have those numbers.
Does Chris have an idea?
I think it saves us about $175,000. And I would add this caveat.
How much was that?
$175,000.
I think it saves us about $175,000. I can look that up for sure. But it was around that savings. What I can say, and Councilman Clark, you're absolutely right about an optimal transit system, but I do have to add this caveat. Since we have eliminated Saturday service, we've had zero complaints. We've had none. No one has said, oh my gosh, you cut Saturday service. I can't. And I'm sure that maybe we just haven't heard it.
Sorry, but I can find you some.
I'm sure that you can. Put those out there on Facebook. I can tell you.
I can actually refer them to you.
No one has complained about Saturday service. So in fairness, I do want to.
Wasn't ridership, wasn't that the lowest, ridership-wise?
The cuts that we made in January were essential to us balancing our budget this year, and we have balanced the budget this year because of those reductions. If we cut what we thought would be the least impact to the system, and it turns out we think that we were right, that that was the least impact to the system.
Well, I can respect your budgetary process, looking out for your bottom line, but our bottom line is the residents of Norman, and we need to do what's best for our community.
We're happy to do that. Again, this being, if this goes the way we think it's going, the council will make a lot of decisions about the public transportation system going forward.
Councilmember Beerman.
Well, it's the one thing I am really excited about, is being able to direct our own destiny when it comes to public transit, because in my opinion, and as I think you have mentioned to us on several occasions, public transit is not intended to make money. It's one of the reasons why it is federally subsidized, because it is a necessary service. It's not a revenue stream. So I don't know that we can find room immediately to restore Saturday service, although having the numbers on what it costs is a good start. But I do think that that needs to be in the near term, because I have received complaints about the lack of Saturday service. And I had one woman call me, and she was sobbing because she lost her job, because she was not able to make it to work on Saturdays. And that was a deal breaker for her employer. So I, like I said, I don't know if this is something we can do instantly as soon as we take it over, but I do think that it's something we need to be figuring out how to fund, because this is a service that we need to provide, regardless of whether or not it makes money. So.
I appreciate that. Happy to do that.
Councilmember Holman.
I agree. I think we need to start by just maintaining the existing, what we have right now going. Make sure that's going, and then start looking at either the cost of adding Saturday service back, or maybe instead of Saturday service, we add a new route to the east side or wherever it needs to go. And whichever, you know.
Look at things like that. I do think this is a great opportunity for us to look at all these issues and think about Saturday service first, or maybe, we've had lots of demands for at least two new routes for years on the northeast and southeast parts of the city. So, you know, that's something to think about. But I think starting off, continue the service we have, and then start looking at how we can expand it.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I'm not sure who was first.
Quick follow-up on this. Do we have an idea of how long it takes to do the kind of looking at routes? Like, what's the timeline on that process?
You know, I won't call Kevin to the table, but I would just say that M-MARK is an outstanding, world-class operator in my experience. And I do this as a regular practice every day in Oklahoma City. And I trust that once we get our feet on the ground and make all these transfers and get the system running, that sort of thing can be done fairly quickly. It's really going to be driven by your budget, not so much their capacity to do it, but your willingness to pay for it.
Well, we've got, I think, we need to make sure we're getting community input.
Right.
So I think that will help determine what we can budget, and then what we need from them.
That's great. I appreciate that. I should have mentioned. You're right. Whenever we're taking federal funds, any change in route, certainly a reduction or elimination requires a fairly elaborate, complicated process. I suspect adding it would be the same, or it truly has the same value.
I just want to make sure M-MARK knows that we're very interested in reevaluating the whole thing now that we are able to.
We'll work for you, so you just tell me.
I like you.
Councilmember Castleberry, and then Councilmember Scott.
That's what I was going to say. We're contracting out, so we can say, this is what we'd like. You say, well, this is what it's going to cost you. You say, okay, well, we don't have that. Or, sure, we got it. We can do it. So I think that was one thing we talked about is, you know, this was not, hey, let's start a transit system and see how it goes. This was, oh, next year, you're going to do one. And that was kind of the impetus of, let's just maintain what we're doing, figure out what we're doing, and then let's figure out how to make it better. To the comment of, it's not meant to make money. I don't think there's anything that the city does that's meant to make money. I mean, does public works, you guys make money? Okay, CNG makes money to take care of the losses that we have, other word. So there's nothing the government does that's supposed to make money. One thing I would like to see is that, I didn't realize this, but there's no bus stop in More Norman Technology Center. And most of their students are kids who don't have driver's licenses. And so for Norman High, Norman North to get there, and even for Moore, because it's kind of a county deal, and even adult classes at night, I'd like to see if, you know, if we're going to add new routes, I'd like to see what the feasibility of it would be to add More Norman Technology as a route.
As I mentioned, I think many of you know, there is a long-range plan developed and adopted by CART. We work closely with them. It's in your comprehensive transportation plan, and that's one of the routes that's referenced.
I saw this. I was looking back to that, so I saw that. When I saw that, I thought that was in there. Then I looked, it says proposed. And so I wanted to.
Exactly. So that's a good starting point for the consideration of additional services or routes.
Yeah, the More Norman, I brought about that. That's right. Yeah. Councilmember Scott.
So as for CART staff and the drivers, will we be maintaining the drivers, or is M-MARK going to use their own staff?
If you'll allow me, Counselor, I'll get to that here in a moment, if I may. That is a key point of discussion here as you, as we go forward into that contract with M-MARK. And that is certainly the human resource issue is a key point that maybe Chris can speak to. I do want to reference this slide. This was provided to us by the CART staff here a few weeks ago. And this is a real-time summary of the cost of operations for the current CART, the current routes, as Chris mentioned, for the four months between January 1st and the end of April. So if you want to get a sense of the numbers, the numbers of the cost numbers, the hours of operation, the ridership numbers, the bottom line, it comes out to about $260,000 per month in operating costs so far in 2019. If you run that out to the year, this is about a $3.1 million operation in, under the University of Oklahoma's current operation, which is going to be very different with us. And we're shooting for these numbers or better. But this is where it is today. This is what it's costing to run public transportation today. Again, so that last step is where we're moving into fairly quickly, that, you know, effectuating that transfer of assets and service upon FTA approval. We're waiting for the FTA final approval, which, again, Christina is spending a lot of time working on that legal, technical, and financial capacity submittals. FTA did surprise us a few months ago and said that they too were interested in the July 1st date. We thought they would want to go to October 1st, which is the federal cycle. They wanted July 1st. So that's put us on a little more of a fast track. We certainly understood the university wanted to do that. But they think it's, they believe it would be difficult for the federal funds to be split in mid-fiscal years for the two agencies, the city and the university. Through this point back in here, we made a choice. We were with council in March. Had we chosen to negotiate a private operator, for instance, with a company called McDonald's Transit that runs the system in Edlin, they are a private company, which, and there's plenty of those out there. But had we chosen to do that, we've had to go through a request for proposal process, very lengthy, time-consuming, and we would have lost several months. We opted for the public option, and M-MARK is a public trust operating within the city, within the city. And that allowed us to move right into negotiations with them. They're also the biggest and frankly, the most savvy operator in Oklahoma, so we're well-served by them. But that's why that decision was made. There are other operators out there.
And I think another reason, and it's been expressed by a number of council members, the idea that we are now part of the regional transit authority, and M-MARK is part of that. And so the possibilities are there for a more seamless transition as we hopefully get to the point of a more robust bus system, even before we talk about commercial rail. So I think it had some real advantages for that. Councilmember Castleberry.
It's my understanding that Moore does not have public.
Right.
That's correct. Some of my conversations with the county have been that, you know, with, if we go with M-MARK, that, you know, if maybe M-MARK could encompass Moore or something like that, that might free up the ability for some county funding. You know, they can't do just Norman. But if we, you know, and that kind of goes the whole regional transit authority and stuff. So I think there's some opportunities in the future that we may, you know, we're working on some funding. So we may be able to get some county funding as long as it serves the entire county.
Appreciate that.
And so I think this might be a step in that direction to get there, to increase the service and also increase the funding source.
I think that's exactly right. And Mayor, I appreciate the mention of the regional transportation model. I think that's frankly why M-MARK has been such a good, willing partner with us, because they are a major player. If you haven't ridden the streetcar system in Oklahoma City, they are operating that system as well, and it's a first-class operation. So I just wanted to share this graphic, just to kind of, for those who are more graphically oriented like me, this is really what we think the model is that we're developing. The FTA will regulate this process because they're providing most of the funding. So we're under federal, as some people say, red tape, or strings. There are some strings attached to the federal funding, and we're going to comply with all of those. And then we are attempting, Christina and I, more Christina than I, is negotiating a contract with the University of Oklahoma to undo their system, and then another contract with the M-MARK organization to resume operation. And of course, all of these things have to work in a. If we're going to take a bus from the University of Oklahoma, the city will own the bus, we think, and then we will lease it to M-MARK and that sort of thing. And we also, right now, are working on a model that we will continue to use the university's facility. And I'll show you some photos here in a moment. That makes the most sense right now. It may not make the same sense here in a few months or a year.
Councilmember Clark.
Quick question with the leasing of the buses. Right now, I think OU makes money on wrapping them?
Correct.
Were we going to do that, or does M-MARK not want them to be wrapped?
It's part of our advertising contracts. We will continue that same principle.
I didn't know if they had to look all the same or anything?
I know M-MARK does wraps as well, but it's probably more for Oklahoma City vendors, and we'll have them look any way you want.
Really like you.
Start of a beautiful relationship.
So if you've never been to the Theda Dempsey Transportation Center, it's a beautiful complex, about 10 years old. I had the great pleasure of knowing and working with Theda for a few years before she retired. And anyway, to the left of the screen are the administrative offices, and then to the right, of course, is the shop area. And right now, we're on this trajectory that we would lease some of this space, both in the administrative office side and in the shop side for magnets. But again, that could change in the next 30 days as the numbers come in. Here is that shop facility. Our fleet staff would kill to have a shop like this. It is a very beautiful, modern facility, unlike our 50-year-old fleet facility. But we would look forward to operating in this space. They have their own fueling system for unleaded diesel and CNG. They have a very robust CNG operation like we do, and many of the buses are compressed natural gas. So frankly, we think it would be in our interest to sell ourselves or sell CNG to M-MARK as opposed to letting the university do.
Councilmember Clark.
So these facilities were constructed with federal funds?
Partially, yes. About 60% federal funds.
So not only is it easier to partner with existing facilities, it's easier than separating out existing facilities because they're a building?
I think that's right. Although I would say, and Chris can confirm, that the FTA has now determined that the university must repay all of the federal funds based upon how they are going to arrive at that value, despite the fact that we're going to lease it.
Really?
They have to pay back all of that. If they continue to own this facility, they have to pay back all the federal money.
Out of sheer curiosity, can I ask what that amount is?
I've heard lots of numbers. I've heard up to $10 million, but I don't know where it is now.
It is 46% of the current appraised value of the building, because FTA's interest in the building is 46%. That's what they funded it to build it. It appraised for $4.8 million. So we believe that we're going to owe about $2.2, $2.3, something like that. It's a little under 50%.
Even if we share it?
Even if we share it. I asked the FTA on multiple calls if we were to allow the city to operate out of there at no cost, no lease payment, we take on all the utilities, you just operate out there. And I said, can we not pay FTA back? And they said, if you're going to own the facility and not operate public transportation, you must pay back the money.
Wow.
So we've asked that several times, as have our attorneys. So it's unfortunate.
Councilmember Wilson.
We would let you operate out there at their charge.
Would it be possible, then, for us to purchase, not to be able to money, hypothetical, that facility, and then lease it back to you?
I don't think that that's an option. I think it's something that the university wants to retain. It brings us great value in our university fleet operation, and then when we operate the campus shuttles as well. So we'll still have, we're saying that we operate three pieces out of there, the university's fleet operations, so a dump truck, a sedan, and then the university shuttles, and then public transportation. We're still keeping two-thirds of our operations in the building. So I believe we still want to own it.
You want it. I got you.
Again, here's a, speaking of the wraps, here's a wrap that we actually paid for through a grant. This is our bicycle advisory committee, the thing that they do every year that encourages people to operate safely around bicycles. But that's a pretty good idea. Lots and lots of bus stops, so we will become the owners of these facilities. We've always considered the university to be the owner, and operator, and maintainer of these. Now we will be that.
Didn't we pay for those a little?
Public art.
With the exception, thank you, Counselor. With the exception of this, I wanted to point out the newest and kind of fanciest bus stop. This is the one on Lindsey Street that we paid for and constructed. Technically, we own these on Lindsey Street, but all the others would be owned by the university.
Councilmember Beerman.
So are we now going to own the bus stops on the non-university routes?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. Well, consider this my official request to actually put bus stops at all the ones on the east side that don't, like the one at Irving.
Shelters, you mean?
Yes, yes.
And I, Chris can confirm, but I think the way that works, the shelters, shelters and the advertisers, shelters are built by Tyler Advertising in exchange for doing advertising on the shelters themselves. So we would just. So we would just negotiate with Tyler accordingly to do that.
Councilmember Clark, but we still have to maintain them, even if, even if they built them and advertised.
Correct. Pick up the trash and do all the things that we don't do today.
That was my question. What kind of trash cans, recycling, whatever do we have on these and?
Currently Tyler's careful.
Okay. So Tyler, we would negotiate that with Tyler. We, we didn't do that on the Lindsey Street project, so the city's actually doing that here, but we're in that process of renegotiating that.
So like trash cans and cigarette butts and all that?
Right. As much as we can, we'd like to continue the, the contract option that the university is using with Tyler or other contractors, I guess, if that were appropriate. That's a newer one. Here's an older one, on Main Street. We have worked with the university, this is, it happened to be a construction shop, but, but we've worked with them over the years to improve these, make them more ADA accessible. Here's an example of one with a shelter. There are many without shelters. And so those are, this is something else we've got to think about, that we will become the owners of many of these. So the, the future OU transit system, as we are approaching it right now, they would continue to maintain and own their administrative building and their service garage, as we just discussed. They would like to keep 18 of the 45 vehicles, and you can see the makeup of those vehicles there for their university operation, their student operation. And they would like to continue to operate on, whether to call them routes or not, we've been having that discussion this week, whether to call them routes or not. But these are the routes that where they, where the students are most, most prominent. So they would like to continue to operate all of these student routes. So 32, 40, 42, 43, and 52. And I'll show you some numbers here in a minute. So this is kind of the baseline of how we're dividing the high.
Okay. Councilmember Clark.
Do we have a, a route map we could possibly put up to show what these are?
I don't have it here, but I did include it in your packet of information. I'm sure Chris knows about it.
40, which is Lloyd Noble Shuttle, operates exclusively on ASP.
It actually shows them too.
Between Imhoff and Lindsey is what 40 is. 42 operates mainly on Jenkins and ASP. 32 is mainly Jenkins, Chautauqua, and ASP. And then 52 goes to our creek areas and then makes a loop around campus, Elm, Boyd, Jenkins, Lindsey.
And then I have two questions. With the 18 of the 45 vehicles in the fleet, not all of the buses are seeing like newer ones, right?
Correct.
So how are we going to negotiate the good ones?
That's, that's one of our tougher issues right now. That's, that's exactly where we are right now. And of course, we will not need all of the remainder, Embark alone, and a portion of those.
Okay.
I'm not sure what will be with the remainder.
Because it'd be nice to, as we are ready for 100 community, to get all electric or anything like that, as, as clean of buses as we possibly can. And then with the routes that they would like to keep, we're obviously going to have to work with them to see, you know, we would want our buses on the same routes. Is there a problem with that?
Partly what we're working through. It seems like we're running around two sets of buses on the same route. So we've got to sort through that frankly. One of our proposals, frankly, that we've been discussing is that the city, where the, Embark would run these off-campus routes, and then the university would reimburse us for that operation. So still working through that.
And then we would need to ensure, would it be possible to have, I mean, any person could just walk up and pay to ride their buses? Or would it be for students only?
The theory there that we would, that we've been discussing is that students would continue to ride free as part of their fee system, but the university would pay us for that ride effectively.
Okay. So that money is not reflected in the budget?
No, we're negotiating that and.
Figures, okay.
I have a question. What if you live on campus where you, you use your personal bus? How much would that be for me to get on the bus to go to a city bus?
Will there be the ability of people to transfer from, if they live on the campus?
Great question. At this point, the university has been kind enough to continue to negotiate with us for the continued operation of the transfer station. For those who haven't, are familiar with that, it's on Brook Street and basically in a parking lot, in a campus-owned parking lot. So we will continue to operate the transfer station in the same configuration that we're doing today. The difference being that the city or the Embark buses would be operating on the city system, university would be operating under their own system. And we've got a lot of details to work through.
So, Chris?
I think that, I think Amy's question gets to something that we're probably still negotiating is, how do we allow citizens to ride our buses? And how do we allow students to ride city buses? And I don't think we're there yet. I think that, I think we've got a lot of the main pieces in place as far as the transfer, but you're, you're going to get into some nuances the closer we get. And that's something that we still need to talk through as probably.
So, so the answer is basically that we're, we're working it out, but we don't know the number yet. They're working it out. So the transfer can happen, and you can get on one, and then you can get on the other. The cost, the, the amount of, that it's going to cost, we're not sure about that.
Logistically, logistically it won't change, but the cost is unknown.
Yeah.
If we got two entities, we'll be on the same car.
Like OU uses.
What I'm understanding is I would take the OU bus to the transfer station, get off the OU bus, and I would get on the Embark bus to take the city route.
Yes. That's what.
Now, cost is a different.
Yeah. We still don't know the cost.
Logistically, it shouldn't change at all.
But what I'm asking is, OU right now has the free, has the monthly bus passes where you can ride the bus for $12.50.
Those are the things we're, we're working on. We don't know yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention because a lot of people are asking that.
Okay.
That's a good point.
And I wanted to come today to bring those to you.
So part, an important thing I think to communicate is that everybody's aware of that. That is something that they're, they're working on, and they're trying to figure out what the, the cost is going to be to do that pass and then get on, then get on our buses. Hopefully, we're going to try to negotiate something that's as close as possible with what it is now.
And I would say, I have another question. Well, and I'm just bringing this to you. Right now, people are using card access passes. Also, will those be able to transfer when you guys take over? Will you guys still honor those?
So are these prepaid passes?
There'll be a transition period that, again, we're negotiating that as, as we speak. And again, Embark is operating a very similar kind of a system in Oklahoma City with day and week and month passes. We'll be transferring that same approach here. But yeah, the transition is going to be a little challenging here.
I do have one other question for you. Starting July 1st is when you do your annual for free bus passes for lowering some people. That's when that starts. Now, that ends on that day, July 1st. People are supposed to sign up for, people are supposed to sign up for new bus passes for the next year. And the other thing that it needs to be is, are they going to be able to, Embark, and they're going to take all their memberships over to Embark? That anybody who's had an access card is going to be allowed with Embark being, just transferring it over? Are they going to have to sign up for Embark to be, having been disabled again and doing the whole trial system?
The bus pass system through CEBG will remain exactly the same, with the exact same number leases here.
Okay. That's what I needed to know.
No changes there.
And I also wanted to know if the, if a person rides OU cart right now, would they have to reapply with Embark? Or does that carry over when they take over?
I think that's what.
That's what I got.
I think that was his question, just yes. To answer your question, I think, yes.
Yeah, it was just mentioned, I think what you're speaking to, I learned this last week, there are literally 800 members who are pre-qualified for card access, and we are working with the two agencies to transfer that.
To transfer the prequalification.
There's quite a process here to, to, to become pre-qualified with the system. And there's a process that CART uses, there's a process that Embark uses, we'll adopt that and continue it.
So how you, I have one other question. How are you going to renew these passes on July 1st for all these people that are, even for the passes? They have to sign up for it on July 1st for the next remaining whole year. And that's when you do it, from year to year. If we don't sign up for it, then we don't get any more passes coming up on the end of July. You don't get any more passes, it stops.
Don't think anything will change.
We're still, we're still going to have you sign up for the passes on July 1st.
Where are you going to do that?
We will process everything just as usual, because we're probably, we're shooting for July 1st, but we're going to, I mean, we're acting like we're operating it into the next fiscal year, and then we'll transfer everything up until we get that. So you'll apply to us, and then we'll transfer it over to Embark and the city.
You might want to put that on your website. A lot of people are asking those questions right now.
I'm sure that.
Good questions.
And again, there's lots and lots of questions, and John's exactly right. We need, once we get this negotiated, we will want to get that information out there.
I was a little bit concerned about some of that because I live off campus.
And we live off the campus.
Yeah.
We're going to be campus.
We're going to have to find a way to honor each other's riders, probably.
Yeah, that's going to be something like Mr. Glenn said there, we're going to have to figure out a way, at least for the first year or so, would say, hey, you know, we're trying to keep it as is. That means that we have to honor their ridership. I mean, that's just something we're going to, I'm glad you brought those points up. We need to make sure we address those things and.
You bet.
After a couple of weeks, I'm sure we'll have it all figured out.
I wanted to share the ridership numbers. We've not talked about this, and frankly, we're just kind of getting our head around it in recent weeks. So the current total ridership in FY19, not finished there. I think, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, you're carrying about 1.3, 1.4 million a year. So up to, up to the time we're counting these, full of a million ridership on the CART system. The projected OU ridership amount of that is about 72%. And they're taking that with them, okay? And you can see how it breaks out on these, on these routes that we just mentioned. 52% of the ridership is on that Lloyd Noble route. People coming, students parking their car at Lloyd Noble, jumping on the bus and going to campus, and coming back at the end of the day and jumping back in their car. So the point here is, to this point earlier about cost-effectiveness, if this doesn't define it, I don't know what does. So the proposed city ridership based upon current numbers, and again, this will change, I'm sure, and evolve over the next year, but we will be inher, or receiving or keeping a little under 30% of the current ridership in the system. So about 280,000 riders a year, passengers a year, which is about 25% of what is being taken care of in the system today.
Are those unique riders or those total?
These are, these are non-student riders. It's not unique. So if somebody gets on four times, they're counted four times. The same person.
So it's probably half of that as far as uniqueness, probably half because I ride the bus somewhere, I come back.
It's rides, not riders.
So for our 1.1 million dollars on 280, if we cut that in half, it's costing us 10 bucks a ride.
In round numbers, yes.
How many people is that serving?
I see, we could Uber this.
I don't know if Chris has those numbers, but that, these are rides, they're not, I mean, we can only get all.
Yeah, right. I know it's hard to.
It's like 10,000 Norman residents ride city bus.
We're pointing out, if we readjust our routes, you know, we've got a senior center to consider. We've got Westwood that we'd like to see addressed in the summers. It will increase.
Or we could provide Uber cards to people. I'm serious. I mean, that's something we have to, if this doesn't work, you know, we may be looking at providing just Uber cards to people.
Like vouchers?
Vouchers and.
Cities do that.
I know, it's not.
I appreciate that, because that's, I, I, I.
I think right now we're kind of stuck with.
Because after a year of experience, if this is what we're finding, and I think it's probably a pretty good estimate, I think the council and the community is going to look at this system very differently. And maybe you want to expand it, maybe you want to reduce it, maybe you want to increase the cart access. I, I don't know. My, my point here is to say that this is going to be a very different kind of a system. We don't think FDA has trouble with this, but my first thought was, oh my goodness, we're going to spend $3.1 million, continue to spend over $3 million and provide a quarter of the services. I don't think they look at it that way. They look at it more on population and the operation of the public transportation system. So I think we're good there. But my point here is that the council may have a whole different look at this once the real numbers start to shake out as to how many riders and where they are, you know?
We saw that in the stuff that OU gave, but yes, Councilmember Castleberry.
Just a quick question. Didn't part of the federal funding formula include ridership? It's population and ridership?
It's weighted, but I think it's more based upon population in terms of that.
I, I think that, and I, I'll call on you just a second, just to add to what Councilmember Castleberry said about the Uber. We know that there are many other different varieties of vehicles that you can use, and that may be because of the numbers of people we're transporting. That may be one of the things that we do want to look at, that might be a more cost-effective way of moving people around. It is true, if we have more routes, we'll have more, we'll certainly build ridership. How do you fund that to get to that point? Well, maybe part of the answer is a variety of, of vehicles. Councilmember Bierman?
Well, I see, I see these proposed ridership numbers as a challenge, but also as an opportunity. I have some, I have some modest experience with Embark. I worked in Oklahoma City for a decade, and they have, no offense to CART, they have some more modern technology to help people access the buses better. They have mobile apps. They have things that CART isn't providing that I think will help us to improve our ridership numbers. And I think if we can be more nimble with how we adjust the routes or how we make sure that there is access, because, I mean, I'll hit this point every single time. There are several parts of Ward 1 where you have to walk 1.2 miles to get to the nearest cart stop.
East side library.
We have no cart stop on the east side library. We have, there are limitations to this current system that I think are inhibiting people from using it. And so once we have the ability to make targeted changes to better serve our residents, I think that these numbers, I think we're going to see better numbers from, from here on out.
I think they'll change a lot. We just don't know. Kind of wrap it up here. So where are we going in the next, and really, we're thinking of this, Christina and I are thinking of this in a 30 to 60-day timeline. We really kind of see the drop dead date is around August 2nd. July 1st is certainly important in terms of the trans, recipient transfer, and as much as we can do, we're going to do. But we know that there's a lot to do in the next 30 to 60 days to make all this happen. So we'll continue our negotiations with Embark, again, to take over the, the system, to be our contractor and operate the off-campus system. They'll be, we'll be transferring some of those assets from the university to Embark. We believe this is, it makes most sense at a three to five year, leaning more to that five-year term on the contract. That's asking a lot for a company to come in and, and commit to something less than five years, given the scale of this commitment. And then, again, continue those negotiations with the university, transferring assets, leasing facilities. Here are some of the lease rates that we received from them recently, just so you know that that's, that process is underway, working through the buses, bus stops and so on, routes. And then again, some kind of a term to that agreement, presumably consistent with the Embark term. Frankly, in the last few weeks, I've come to the conclusion that I don't have time to run this system and be your public works director, and nor does Christina have time and be your public works director, and nor does Christina have time to do this and be your assistant city attorney. So I think we're gonna need some staff, at least one new staff member to be our transit administrator. And so I'm working with our HR department now to figure out what those people look like and how much money they make and so on. But this is a big job, we're gonna be taking on a lot here. And as much as we can depend on Embark to help us, we need, we need someone working on the city's behalf every day, answering questions like the ones you've had today. So I think there'll be a staffing request here in the next 30 days that we need to talk about in the current budget. I think this budget can handle it, this would not be a strain on the general fund, I don't believe. And then, again, once the FTA deems the city as the eligible grant recipient, then the work begins to literally physically start to transfer those assets. And then I kept this point in here, the council has pressed on this point that we do want, once we get our feet on the ground and get the system, or continue the system running, that you wanted to appoint a citizen committee to begin looking at additional routes, different routes and that sort of thing. And we're mindful of that, we're just focused on getting the transfer in place first. And I, I'm hoping that that could happen in August or September. And I, the way I see it, you're sort of building your next budget, your FY21 budget based upon these conversations about different routes and costs and so on and so forth.
Councilmember Castleberry and then Scott.
Sean, can you go back one slide there? I want to apologize, I've gotta leave in about 10 minutes, it's my son's birthday and I have to be pulled by seven. But so, quick question on this, 1620 per square foot per month for lease space?
I think that's a mis- I think that's per year.
I hope that's, yeah. Thank you, because I will build you a transfer station.
I beg your pardon, that's per year.
It may, it may be per month.
Okay, so that's, so that's a 400 square foot office for $76,000 per month.
I have a question.
That's, we need to talk about that, that's-
Okay, Councilmember Scott.
I don't believe my question was answered about drivers.
I'm sorry, thank you, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant to get to that, I probably kind of back here. So in addition to the transfer of, of these assets, the university is, is proposing a reduction in force. Obviously, they don't need as many employees. And I think that has tentatively been announced, we've been working with their HR group and Chris, and I think maybe you're gonna do more of that formal process here this week. So I'll let Chris speak to the numbers, but, so the university would have a reduction in force, just like they've done in several other departments. Landscaping is one of the departments we hear, hear about. They will eliminate several positions and keep several positions. And then Embark is a, is an employer. The difference is, they operate under a union system, the university does not. And so it can't just be a, a change of the shirts or a change of the jackets. Embark really needs to be allowed to hire whoever they choose to hire, I think, and operate the system accordingly. But certainly those folks, drivers for instance, who are highly qualified and certified would, would be highly considered, I'm sure.
Follow-up question.
I have a question.
Follow-up question, how many jobs will be lost then?
We're still working through those numbers, there will be a certain amount retained and then there will be a certain amount that we'll have the opportunity to go to Embark.
Do you have a, do you have an idea? Next month?
Councilmember-
Probably in the next 20 weeks.
Councilmember Beerman.
How much notice do you expect to be able to give employees? You said a couple of weeks, they have those numbers. Are you gonna then be making announcements fairly quickly so that people can make the necessary life choices that they need to make?
Absolutely, there are policies we have to follow and I believe that it's 60 days notice, but we're not prepared to talk about any HR issues in this meeting.
I have a question.
But ma'am, wait, wait till the council members have had a chance to-
Can I direct my question to Embark, to Embark at the course?
When do you anticipate opening up job openings, openings to, when do you anticipate doing that to operate the city? Because you have the staff to already operate, what we anticipate to be?
This is gonna be a completely separate operation. Density and distance are not gonna allow me to get economies of scale by extending Embark down here, even if we include more, which would be a great idea. I looked very, very hard, we're like experts in this too, so I know what I'm talking about. So these are gonna be distinctly different operations. And as you can tell, everybody here, I just love these questions, financial stuff, you guys know what you're talking about. My hat's off to you. This is a very difficult situation. Number one, Mr. O'Leary used the word "unique." Unique is never good in the business, at least from a cost perspective. By the way, before I do that, I want to tell everybody that Embark is here, Oklahoma City, are you kidding me? We love Norman, we'll do absolutely everything that we can, and we know what we're talking about. And we can't come down here and lose money, as you can imagine, just like Norman going to Oklahoma City. I think that there'd be some, you know, we'll figure this thing out, but this is a very, very difficult thing. Number one, unique, 35 years. Number two, there was a mention of doubling up on routes. You're a businessman, when you double up on anything, guess what happens?
The cost isn't the same, right?
Exactly right. But there's some other, you know, that, that, we'll have, you're running two companies instead of one, which is always, two companies, running two companies costs more than running one. And the fixed costs and all of those things, people like myself and others can dedicate their time and assist in this thing. And, you know, Oklahoma City's pleased to do that, but we can't. I hope you know that this is, it's, it's gonna work out okay, I know that because we're smart enough and we know what we're talking about, and you people are also. This is not gonna be an easy deal. And this one-month, two-month thing is, as you can see, by the way, 72% of the customers are going somewhere else. As businessmen, when you have four routes, and we're gonna have six routes, that's 50% more routes with 72% fewer people. So we could just look at all of these things, and I love it, the good thing is, yes.
What I'm hearing is that you don't know whenever you'd be looking to hire more drivers until you know-
Well, here's, here's what I know, we'll figure out how much this is and we're gonna hire absolutely everybody that's an existing employee that we possibly can. Here's what I also know, is that since we're the ATU and some things, our people make a little bit more than the cart people presently do.
Not the union ATU, it's the-
I'm sorry, yeah, the amalgamated transit union. And Embark is a unionized company and we can't, as you can imagine. So I mean, this is a really, really complex thing. And frankly, I mean, you guys have been kind of caught flat-footed on this deal. And, you know, I wish I could take you all on the bus to go up to Embark and you can see these guys that absolutely know what they're talking about. One of the, Madam Mayor, you pointed out, it was just wonderful that you were to have a private company come in here. There's one good part to that, and I know because I've worked for the biggest transportation company in the world for 20 years. And they would make a minimum of 15% profit that no one is gonna be worrying about on these things. Additionally, you're gonna have the benefits of all of these guys that work for me throughout the world, literally, that have now come, you know, as we got older to Embark, and we're up there so we know what we're talking about. Come up, I'd love to come up to Embark and, and take a little look at what's going on.
We should take, we'll take a field trip.
I would love that, I'll bring a bus down and get y'all.
You have to come around to her and pick us all up where we're at.
Okay. Councilmember Beerman has a question, she's been waiting, Councilmember Castleberry.
I want to say I appreciate that you're here and also that you have said that you would look at hiring existing.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to know.
And it'll be good for them too, by the way.
Councilmember Beerman.
Oh, I already asked my question.
Okay, Councilmember Castleberry.
I was gonna make the comment that we're contracting with Embark. And I think, we all know that people don't contract with a city or anybody else to lose money. So I assume if, if there's a loss on this deal, it is, it is gonna be Embark that says, we'll take this on and we'll lose $100,000 a year because we want to provide the service. They're gonna be like anybody else that you do a business with. I assume Annie's doesn't take a dog on below cost. I assume you don't sell stuff below cost.
Actually, we do.
We have an underfunded shelter.
Yes, we sell stuff below cost occasionally, for bigger picture reasons. But generally, a business does stuff they're planning to provide services at a cost. So it's gonna be our budget that's affected, and that's just something we have to understand, I don't-
I would love to, because you're completely right now.
Okay. I think we got this covered.
All right.
They cannot lose money. So you're not gonna be here for any of the budget discussions.
As long as it's balanced, I'm cool. Add the mechanics, we gotta have mechanics, like, just like this, I don't-
And the sustainability officers.
I can talk about sustainability coordinator, but we've gotta have, you cannot operate a fleet. And we're gonna have, we won't be operating this fleet, but we can't have a fleet without mechanics. So I think that's a-
Absolutely, okay.
And we got the budget for it.
I think-
Councilmember Clark.
Birthday of your kid, Robert. The last thing I would mention is just to thank Councilmember Scott for bringing that up because I personally have also received questions from cart employees wanting to know what's going on.
About the employees, yes.
And I know you can't talk about it, but they're all freaking out, like most staff at the University of Oklahoma still. But they're really needing some direction.
We're meeting the next Wednesday to discuss the transition.
Well, they should all know by, within the next few weeks, what's gonna happen. I mean, you'd be much closer to, at least, it, it may not totally be transferred, but you'll have a lot of those pieces of information by the end of, of July, okay? I had one lady back here that wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, last time I checked, cart had something they called the band advisory committee. It was some, some members of the staff wanted, some riders wanted, so the customers could give some input as to what they wanted done. Did Embark really have anything like that?
Well, that's, that's what we talked about, ma'am, that's one of the recommendations, is that we will have a citizen committee.
Is that a standing committee?
Okay.
Or just beginning?
University committee, we'll have our own.
Okay.
Yes.
I have two points.
I have a friend who does the bus regularly. She just texts us to let you know that every 30 minutes of scheduling was a godsend for people with doctor appointments. I go for allergy shots weekly and had to take three buses to get there.
Thank you. Yeah, those are all the kinds of things that, how often the service runs, all of those things are really important. So they'll all be part of the challenge. All right, thank you very much, Sean. Okay, this brings us to item number four, which is a follow-up discussion regarding the proposed FYE 2020 city of Norman budget and capital budget.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Anthony Francisco, the finance director. With me is Kim Kaufman, the budget manager. And this is just a continuation of the ongoing discussions that you've had related to the budget. I'm passing around just a, a bit of an update to the memo that you received previously on budget amendments that council has directed that you wanted to consider. And just some updates to that, the updates are highlighted in yellow on page two, on number five. And this was just, and again, for each of the individual amendments, the actual amendment language is given first. And then below that, in bold, is some just kind of explanatory language. On number five, there's some, the number has been filled in, at least as it stands right now. The reduction in the capital fund related to the delays, related to the Federal Highway Administration money is $4.5 million. And council had some discussions about how they might want to use that money. So the, this reserve of the capital fund balance for the Robinson and Crossroads project is just, that really doesn't require an additional council action, but there would just be that line below the line, if you will, in the capital fund of reserving that fund balance of about $3.1 million. And that really doesn't require an additional council action. There's an added number seven of 65-
Sorry, I'm sorry. On number five, about the capital fund allocation of $4.5 million, you said it doesn't, there's an amendment right under it. So I, I must have misunderstood what you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, again, the language below the actual budget amendment language that is in bold is just explanatory information.
It doesn't have to be in the amendment.
Correct.
Okay, I, thank you.
The actual amendment language is what is in quotes for each one of these.
Okay.
A new number seven has been added in the capital fund to increase allocations by $65,000. This is an annual program for replacement of the golf carts at the Westwood Golf Course. And that just got left out from the capital fund, so this will be to add that back in for this fiscal year. Then, moving back, I guess that's really all the changes that would be requiring a council action. And then we just open it up for your further direction at this point. Remember that the scheduled consideration of the budget is next council meeting on Tuesday, the 11th. That's when this language would be brought forward for individual council members. You can discuss amongst yourselves who might want to make the motions on each of these items. And if there's anything else that you'd like to consider, we will certainly work up the numbers for you on those things now and have them ready for you on Tuesday. So just open for your discussion.
Okay, are there any, I have, I have a couple of requests, so, but other, any of you have, any, any council members have something they want changed or added or that we don't have on here yet? Councilmember Beerman.
Does this include or do we not need the amendments for the capital projects that we did add? The animal shelter HVAC system, the, we don't need to do, we don't need to do an amendment for those?
Yeah, I think the only one, it does add in here about the camera truck and, that we talked about it, that is in here. But the other ones don't need it, okay. Yes, Councilmember Scott.
I was tagging along.
Okay, all right, any others? Okay, the, the two things that I would like to bring back up are the sustainability coordinator and the two mechanics for the PSSP. I understand from the city manager that the, the sustainability coordinator is still in the budget. And what we're asking to do here on item 12 is an amendment to remove it. And I would like to strike item 12 and leave the sustainability coordinator in the budget for a number of reasons. I mean, we, we're doing Ready for 100, we, the HERS rating, stormwater education. The, we're gonna be redoing the whole municipal complex or a significant amount. OG&E franchise, I just, I think in the end, this person could save us some money, I really do.
I agree.
So is everybody okay with us striking, just leaving that out, not doing that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, the other thing is, and we had discussed, Robert mentioned it on the way out, about the two mechanics. And Anthony had to have to talk a little bit more about where the money's coming from. The, we know how many vehicles we've added for PSSP. I know we did add some, I don't know what, Sean, we added some Botec student, some, something.
Doing some part-time, just some part-time auto techs this summer, but just to frame it, we've, through PSSD 1 and 2, we added 60 vehicles and no additional.
Yeah, 60 vehicles. And if we let these vehicles get in bad shape, if we're not servicing them often enough, that drives up cost. And we do not want police rushing around town at high speeds in a vehicle that has not been well-maintained. That just gives me butterflies in my stomach, I think it's a safety issue. Okay, Stephen.
So-
I'm sorry, Councilmember Holman.
Are we doing the, so the other positions like the cybersecurity, HVAC?
Those are, those are in there.
Those are, those are-
Those are all in there. Yeah.
Good.
Follow-up to his-
Yes, Councilmember Scott.
The earmarked for the Robinson Crossroads project.
That's, that's, that's in, that's in here, that was the 4.5 million capital. So that's, that's in there, that's gonna be earmarked until we find out what's gonna happen for ACOG.
I know, in February, I'm fine.
It is, so.
I'm fine.
All right, Councilmember-
I want to make sure everybody understands, that is not an appropriation. That's a reserve of fund balance.
Thank you, you're just kind of escrilling.
I, can I ask another question, actually?
Yes, Councilmember Scott.
Since we just talked about cart and hiring a staff position that was requested for that, should we also think about setting funds aside for that?
Well, what I understood Mr. O'Leary to say was that they, they feel like the budget for cart will cover, or the budget for the new transportation system will cover it.
Okay, so you don't need to worry about-
So he said it would not come out of the channel fund.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So that was the first thing I thought, oh no, funding a position. Yes, councilmember Holman, did you have anything else? Yes, councilmember Wilson.
I'm going to apologize that, I think I must have missed this memo and my illness and vacation combo that I had, but did we pull out the salt lot on the capital projects?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
Hold that out. Thank you. So on the, on the public safety, in talking with Anthony, the motion would be, the amendment would be, I move that the public safety sales tax fund allocations be increased by $337,005 for expanded emergency vehicle maintenance program in the fleet maintenance division. I further move to add inter-fund transfer expenditures of the general fund of $187,875. So that's how much would come out of the general fund and the capital fund. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought those were already passed out.
I was, I was a little lost there.
I can't, I can't read that fast. Okay.
So the total cost of the program is $337,005. And remember that that would be budgeted in the public safety sales tax fund, but the public safety sales tax fund does not have money to pay for it.
So it's coming from the general fund.
So there would be a subsidy from the general fund of $187,875 for the ongoing expenses and $149,130 of that is for a truck and some other equipment from the capital fund.
And so the $187,000, we still have a net difference amount left.
Yeah, and we'd have to plug that in and see what it looks like, but I believe so, yes.
So it would not change our balance, I mean, would lessen our balance, but our balance would still be.
It'd still be balanced.
Balanced. Yeah. So. Sean, do you want to say anything about, I mean, I just, I just think it's important for safety and I think that once again, we save money if we take care of what we've got.
Thank you, mayor. I'll just say thank you. These were allocated or determined by council in PSSD 2, so we are actually several years behind doing this and we've taken delivery on all these vehicles. And frankly, our biggest challenge in addition to lots of additional police cars is really fancy fire trucks. And the chief can speak to it better than I can, but that's our biggest worry. We are, we are literally taking on million dollar and took delivery on a $1.2 million fire truck and they are our maintenance challenges. And in addition to having just mechanics, these are highly skilled emergency vehicle technicians, but they're different than other mechanics. And so that's really a lot of the focus of these two positions is to do better with fire trucks and police vehicles.
We don't, we don't really have people trained to do that. Chief King, do you want to make a comment?
Sure, and yeah, Sean makes a good point. What we've tried to do, at least since I've been here and prior to that, we're all, we're getting Pierce fire trucks. So with the addition of these mechanics, they can be focused on one brand of fire truck, same parts, same motors, same, they're, they're used to them. So turnaround time is increased. And since they have been short-staffed, that's one thing we've tried to do, at least get that where they're not working on five different brands of fire trucks. That brand has really worked good for us. We do it off the HGAC contract, as you know, and they've worked well for us in the field, so.
And where do we get these mechanics that have this training?
Well, there is a certification program that fleet uses for this, so Sean can touch on that.
I suspect we'll grow our own, mayor, but there are a few out there in the industry. These are, these are rare, frankly, are, it's, frankly, mechanics are one of our toughest trades to hire in any level today, in any city. Norman is no exception and these are even harder to find. So I suspect we're going to grow our own in this category because we have highly skilled people now who can make that step up to EBT more than we can probably find them off the street and we'll backfill those positions with lesser skilled mechanics.
But there's trainings and certifications.
Chief's right, there's a, there's a national training certification program for EBTs. It's, it's really quite good, but very few mechanics have been able to secure that level of certification. So that's, we're probably going to end up finding our own here with our existing.
And I would like to add to that, too. We, we design our own apparatus specific to the district it's going in. So when we put an apparatus at it in Ward 5, we beef those up, we make it specific to what the challenges are going to be to that district. So they're not commercial chassis apparatus, they're customized to each, to the challenges they're going to face at each ward or each district of our fire district. So that, that can be a challenge for those mechanics too, but overall, we try to simplify that with the same motors, same pumps, same place you're going to order parts, so they can get used to those apparatus.
We want your vehicles to run.
We do too. And we've had good success, I believe, over the last five years or so.
Yeah, and the fire trucks are really important in Ward 5.
Yes, they are.
Because.
We appreciate that.
They cannot get ambulances out there very fast, so it's, it's really important. So.
Fire hydrants.
How is everybody about doing the amendment to add the two fleet mechanics, the specialty fleet mechanic?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, great, thank you all. Any other things? Uh-oh, got two thumbs up.
Four. Okay, we're done.
Okay, all right. If, if you all have any other changes, please let us know before the 11. We don't want any surprises. Please.
I know you were in a super event last month.
I want that.
I got a question. $3 fee for paying for the water bill online.
And answering questions.
We haven't gotten to it yet.